Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's school board meeting. It's March 30th. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we're going to have public participation via phone number. I'm going to give you that phone number here in just a second. It is the same number we had last week. It is area code 603-834-0109. Again, that number is 603-834-0109. I'm going to leave that open for a brief period for anyone that would call in. And on the line, on the, we have staff also calling in that's in Zoom. And we have three of the five board members who are participating via phone. Joel Shagnon, Josh Whitehouse.
Stan Frieda.
And Stan Frieda. So at this point, we have a couple of people in attendance. Trying to keep our people at the meeting down to the recommended 10-person maximum. At this point, unless anybody has anything, we can go. I'm going to turn it over Ruth Ellen to go over anything regarding updated on the remote learning. I think she want to make present, you know, things to the board.
We will be putting out messaging to families tomorrow regarding a few tweaks that we're planning to make to the scheduling. Thank you for those who've participated in the surveys that we've put out to kind of get a sense of what's working and what still needs some updating. We will be giving some additional hours for those families who are working on the front lines and can't necessarily get in for drop-off times. We're going to be doing those on Thursday night, and I'll get those hours out to you as well. But thank you for your patience and your grace and your humor as we've gotten through this. And we are listening and we understand that there have been parts of this that have been great and parts of this have been a little frustrating. And so we're going to see what we can do to tweak this to make it work for everybody involved. Thank you for joining us in this learning curve, and we'll get there.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is a second read of a policy regarding tobacco products banned on school property.
And what you have in your packets is a version, I did double-check with legal on the wording, and I included and read where that could be included. So it was in private, in personal vehicles on school property. We have to delineate that it's vehicles on property because obviously if we were to find a personal vehicle off property, we have no jurisdiction to say what the contents are. So that's the only change from what you saw last week.
So does anybody, any of the board members have any questions, concerns, or comments regarding the revised draft? Not hearing any. I think Ruth Ellen, it's probably acceptable as is.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to accept it as a second read is amended.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joel. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three.
Three. I think that's unanimous.
Was that, okay, because I only heard one aye from the speaker, so I was waiting for the other two.
Can we do it by roll call? Josh?
Abstain.
Josh isn't abstaining. Joel?
Aye.
Stan?
Aye.
So we have four ayes and one abstention by Josh.
Okay. Thank you.
Next in the whole business, we have budget. So we have some of this will be in public and some will be in non-public based upon staffing positions, but...
Before we do that, I have two quick pieces.
Oh, go ahead.
One was the blood drive that we discussed last week. That will be happening, but that will be at the Old Town Hall on April 10th, not here in the high school gym. So for those of you who've signed up, thank you, and please continue to sign up, but that will be down at the Old Town Hall rather than here.
People online said they can barely hear. Is it possible?
Okay. We need to yell. Okay. I'll yell. So Old Town Hall, blood drive, April 10th. And then on the, the other piece, I'll do it non-public. That's not at this one.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but that blood drive is posted?
It is, it's been advertised, it's put on by the National Arts Society and the Red Cross. So what's up online is the same except for the location, and that will be changing.
So they're going to update it to show that Town Hall is the location?
Yes.
Do we have anything on SAU's website saying that?
We will.
Okay. Good. Moving back to old business on the budget. And we, Ruth Ellen had put up some, I guess, worksheets on the server. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at those. I think they just got up today, though.
And it's, it's mostly what you've already seen. I just added to that. Let me pull that so I'm looking at the same piece. So what's up online and what's in your board packet has the supplies and fixed costs lines that we have discussed. And what I've done for facilitating this is I've put three columns there to the right, an admin column, this is recommended, board at the point that that's checked off, that yes, you've agreed to it. If we have two checks, it's done. If we have something in a board column and not in an admin column, or vice versa, then we may need to do some more discussion. But this gives at least a place to kind of get a feel for how much money is there. As we have looked at those lines, you'll see that there's a description, there's an original line account, there's a reduction amount and the amount remaining. We wanted to make sure that we weren't taking lines straight down to zero as we're looking at the default budget moving forward, but we do understand that there are pieces that are going to need to be purchased ahead. So looking at this, it's kind of a balance between so that we can do part of that now, but still leave something in the line moving forward for pieces that may be needed next year, and also what would move forward.
So to reiterate that, the, any amount remaining line is going to stay in the budget?
That would stay in the budget, yes.
And the amount to be purchased?
Is what would be expended.
Will try to purchase out of?
Correct.
Unexpended funds.
Correct.
So did everybody from the board have an opportunity to pull that up on their Google Drive? And maybe you want to do that so you have that available to you right now?
It's in the board packet. It's called Options for Budget Reduction. And in parentheses, it says...
Under the March 30th?
Under the March 30th folder. And in parentheses, it says Stuff, Not Staff.
So there's a few line items, quite a few line items. Probably while the members are looking at that, if you want to start at the bottom, Ruth Ellen, which is probably the biggest delta, which is the software financial, and give us discussion on that.
Where that comes from. Sure. Looking at the, that's for the replacement software package for our financial system. The overall budgeted amount included not only the software, but the consulting for that cutover and server for the hosting piece. That is, we've been able to get that broken out in talking to the software company. They will host that for us for next year, and then we would need to migrate it to our own server, but we will have a server that we can migrate that to. So that won't need to be an additional cost there.
So it's broken that 61,000 out of, tentatively broken it out over how many years?
This is, the 87,900 is actually the cost of the software. We'd purchase that upfront.
Right.
The rest of the, the piece would be the consulting piece for cutting that over. That's going to be broken out over at least next year, mostly into the following year beyond that. That is roughly, let me pull that up. Believe that might be Jana knocking.
No.
No? Okay.
Did you need me to, I did surprise quote this evening?
Oh, awesome. Go right ahead.
So the 87,900 is what you show, that would be something we would purchase out of this year, 2019-20 funds, that's for the licensing. The 46,780 would be progress build as we add support over the next year. So if we were going to go ahead with this, we would be looking for an encumbrance into 19, into 2021 in the amount of 36,780. The difference between those two, that brings us to 45,570. And the difference between that and what was in our original proposed budget is that server cost that they have agreed to host for one year for free. So we would be pushing that off to a future budget cycle. If we had to purchase it at all, we might have our own internal server capacity at that point to take that, our old data and host it on an existing server. So for the next budget cycle, it would be the 45,570, of which 8,790 would be purchased this year, 36,780 would be encumbered into next year.
Now Jen, on the 36,000, what for the services, what does that spread over? One, two, three years?
I've spoken with them about that, and as I alluded to last time when we spoke, that is actual service cost. It's billed as they work. It's not something that they have any mechanism for us to finance.
Right. But what is the time period that those funds will be expended? Is that expected to be in?
Optimistically, the quickest we could get it in would be between 12 and 18 months from the time we start. It would be dependent on how quickly we can make the cutover. Can you hear me okay?
We can't. No, we can't. And so to translate, that means that we're looking at that being spread over most likely two fiscal years. It would be next year and the year into because it's going to take us about 18 months to do this.
Right.
We may be able to push part of that depending on what, how, how much, it's dependent on what we need for services. So to be conservative, we should encumber the 36,780 into 2021. We may not have to fully expend that if we wind up pushing it past July 2021, but it will be very dependent on how the process goes and how quickly we can bring things up and how quickly we can go live. Our live date would be July 1st, 2021.
Okay. Well, yeah. I mean, the encumbrance is not something we have to finalize tonight. I just want to get a feel for the numbers and what's the time period they were going to spend on. So there's a, I assume there's a $9,000 server that was in the original proposal that we may not need to spend. Is that the number, 9,000?
Actually, it was, it was a little bit more than that.
Oh, yeah. I don't need exact number, just approximate.
They have agreed to host us for free for one year with the old data.
It was about 18.
Won't be looking at that until at least a year out.
Okay. Okay. So yeah, thanks for that information. So we're going to spread that.
You're welcome.
You've got a question.
And that takes a big relief off of this budget cycle.
You have a question to your left.
Oh, go ahead.
Jana, do we have a line item within our existing budget that we could purchase this under?
We have a line item within our budget. We don't have funding in that line item, but that, that is what I'm talking about. If we, if we were to encumber into next year, we could encumber it into that specific line item too.
Okay.
Yes.
My only concern is that when the budget went before the Budget Committee, there was a line item in there that would allow us to expend for this purpose.
We, we do have a line item. It just doesn't have this much money in it.
That's fine. Thank you.
But you still have this software financial line?
We do, we do have, yes.
So really, it doesn't need to go in a different line. It can stay in this line and just go forward into future budgets.
Correct. But we will, we will need to do, if we're purchasing this year, we will need to do a line item transfer into that line to expend, but we have the line from which to expend. Yep.
Okay. So moving on to the other ones, I don't know Ruth Ellen, if you have, you want to start at the top, or you just want to go down through it to see if we have any questions?
Okay. I guess maybe I'll start at the top and see if there are any questions. We're looking at the first two are supply lines. Those are, and these are in order. So anything you see that has an 11, where it says 1,156,100, that's a supply line. 11 means it comes from Valley View. 12 means it comes from Henry Wilson. 30 means it comes from the high school. So the first ones are general supply lines.
And these are where we feel that...
That's where we get paper, pencils, markers.
Right. But you think that this is what is going to be unexpended?
We're looking at being able to purchase that much ahead. That's what, that's what we're looking at there. This, this is the line from which we would be looking to purchase ahead so that we could make the cuts into next year. There was another sheet in your folder that said, and these are lines that we anticipate won't be expended this year.
So am I correct in, with all the supplies, the new equipment, the uniforms and the software, that the total reduction is proposed as 116,317.51?
Yes.
Okay. So I would make a motion to reduce next year's operating budget by 116,317.51 based on the recommendations brought forward by the superintendent.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Can I have the number again, my apologies? 116,000?
317.51 cents.
Any, do we have a second on the motion? I'll second for discussion. Any discussion?
Yeah. Now, Kim, what are you going to, are you planning on doing this in chunks?
She's got a spreadsheet, some of which can be done in public, some of personnel will have to be discussed in non-public. These are the supplies that, that, we're reducing the budget by 116,317.
We can have to speak right now.
Okay. But then next to that, next to that is what we're going to purchase out of fund balance in this existing budget.
Right. And the thing is, if, if we have a motion on this, and then in later discussion, we want to bring it back on the table, we can. I think it's Tim's motion and also the way Ruth Ellen has structured this is to try to get agreement on, you know, a large portion of it, and then just weed it down to the last few items. So I'm okay with the motion because if we, we can bring it back on the table and says, hey, I want to talk about this, uniforms for athletics or something. But right now, it's just trying to bulk it out. I mean, really, this is not a budget cut. This is spending some now.
Spending ahead.
And purchase it next year. So it's, this area, there's actually no cuts. You know, we think there's going to be some unexpended revenues. We're not sure what they will be until it's all over, but, so this really isn't any reduction. It's just spending now and spending some now and spending some next budget cycle. Josh, any, any discussion?
I'm in favor.
Stan, any discussion?
Nope. I'm fine.
Okay. Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So there was...
Josh?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
I heard it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. The next section is the tech equipment that we had discussed the other night. In this, the one change that we made, rather than to take the replacement computers for Valley View down to a zero line, we're looking to expend 10,000 now for those laptops and leave 5,500 in that line against any other replacements that might need to be done throughout the year. We typically have some that need to be done, and also not to leave that line at zero going into a default budget, particularly as tech tends to be, hmm, let's say scrutinized. So wanting to make sure, go ahead.
So you're talking about replacement computers?
The replacement computers, yes.
Now, these ones that we're purchasing this year...
These are for teachers to replace.
Are these something that we're going to need because of online learning?
I would say yes.
And potentially going to be added to our FEMA list?
They could potentially be, yes.
Well, I think if they, I think if we need them now to do the online learning, they should be on that list, even if that list changes by how it's going to be funded.
Okay. I guess what I wanted to make sure is that that line didn't go down to zero for next year because we're, we're going to need to be able to do some pieces there.
No, I agree. You're going to have some, just like maintenance at the highway garage, you're going to need a budget because you're going to have to be replacing stuff, and you don't know what it is until it breaks.
Okay. So, I mean, certainly we could, we could buy the 15,5s worth now, but still leave the, the 5 in the line, however you would recommend that optically. I'm confident that the 5,000 is not going to make a difference in our being able to do it now.
Tim?
My only concern is that we buy what we need for the coronavirus now. So if we have to expend 15,5, we'll find it somewhere within the budget.
Okay.
But I have no problem with the way it's laid out on paper if we buy it this year. Even though it's in the budget, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to spend that next year.
Right. That's true. That's true. I want to make sure it's there if we needed to. The computers that teachers are using now are not the most robust model. It would be good to do that sooner than later.
Go ahead, Tim.
At one time we talked, and I'm looking at your tech equipment, at one time we talked, computers that were already purchased, the Chromebooks that were already purchased for the coronavirus. When I look at the tech equipment on the decreases in the budget, is any of the equipment that we already purchased included in those line items?
The ones that we've already purchased are included in line 30 here that says Chromebooks and projectors.
Okay.
That was the first chunk.
Yep.
And then, so those, those were purchased out of that line, and then the projectors are the additional, I want to say about $10,000 of that.
And, because I know we authorized the 25,000 for Chromebooks.
35.
35.
Chromebooks and hotspots, right.
And we designated that to be put on our FEMA list?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that will still be put there, but that's, that's out of that chunk right now.
Okay.
So those, part of those have been purchased. The projectors obviously have not been, but...
And I know on the software licensing at the last meeting, you presented the details for this and showing that the 5,000 was no longer needed. So pretty much that is the same as presented at the last meeting.
Yes. It's just, it's not shown as, it's not shown as amount to be purchased this year because we're not looking to purchase it. That's why there's a, a line there. But that's correct.
Yeah. You went over that last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And the first item, Chromebooks for Henry Wilson?
Yes. Those were part of, it's Chromebooks, Henry Wilson, but then there was also some other pieces there that were part of the STEM Lab. We're looking at doing that one Chromebook cart. It's the book, Chromebooks, plus the cart for that, for Henry Wilson, that we can also be using for what we're looking at dealing with now. And then the additional pieces in that line are for working on that STEM Lab as well.
So this does not, or is not going on our FEMA list because it's not related to it? By what you just described?
The STEM Lab would not be, the Chromebooks would.
Okay.
The Chromebooks would.
Some of this line.
So the 2,200 could go on.
Okay.
Because that would be for the cart and the Chromebooks, because we need to have a cart to set them up to get them out the door, and then eventually, once they come back, to keep them charged.
Okay. So any questions from the board members regarding these four areas under tech equipment? Some of them we've already authorized the purchase under the FEMA. Hopefully, it'll be reimbursed by the FEMA grant, probably, I think it was about 35,000 or it was more than that at this point?
Well, you authorized 35,000. We haven't spent the full amount. We've got hotspots on order, still waiting for those to come in. We had the last of the shipment of the Chromebooks is in-house, and we're in the process of getting those set up so that I can get that, get those out to families, if not the end of this week, the first of next.
Chairman.
Go ahead, Tim.
So am I correct in your total proposed reduction under your tech equipment is $49,900?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to reduce the operating budget by 49,900 based on the superintendent recommendations as outlined in tech equipment.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Whoever seconded that, Chairman Overruled, who seconded it?
Whiteout.
Oh, Josh. Josh seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there was a stand of Mr. Shagnon. Josh, I didn't get your vote. Okay. Thank you.
So unanimous?
Okay.
They're very, very quiet, just so you know, I don't think anybody's hearing them.
Right. I'll try to reiterate. So it was unanimous by all the board members?
Okay. So we're done with that sheet?
So really, the other discussion, all comes personnel.
Does it become personnel if we have positions by attrition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So at this point, we finished what we can on budget. The public comment session is still open, and I'm going to give anybody at home that wanted to call in at least another minute or two to do so. Also, we have some people here in the audience, staff. So I'm going to open it up to any staff that are present or are called in to make any comments or any questions while I leave the public comment open for another minute or two before we go into non-public.
Can I have another piece of old business?
Go ahead. Stan?
What's the status on the School Street School paperwork to declare on the state registry?
It hasn't been put back on the agenda yet till, till after we resolve this. Probably will be on the next meeting. I haven't spoken with Ruth Ellen about it, but probably be on the next regular meeting.
Which would be Monday.
Monday?
Monday the 6th.
So our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, and we'll have it on the agenda then, Stan. Anyone else?
Staff is muted.
They can unmute themselves if they want to. On their own.
Okay.
So if our next meeting is Monday, regularly scheduled, then we're going to be on, when's the next meeting after that?
April 20th, with one exception. I do have one other other while we're waiting. I did speak with Barrett Christina because we had had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night that was canceled because of the virus. He is able to do a webinar hosted by them, but online with us so that it's tailored to us. It's not just a generic webinar with the board anytime next week that works for you. He wanted me to bring forward, is there a time that works for a workshop? It would be admin and school board as far as...
So for the audit?
It's for, it's generally communications, expectations, what works, what doesn't work, kind of orientation for everybody to all things board. So...
So it's a, it's a meeting for us board members and staff?
And, and admin, yes. Because that way they understand what, what you have the authority to do, and you understand what we need to do and for you, so...
So did he have a tentative date that he wanted to do that?
He said he could do that anytime next week they were open, and I know we have a board meeting Monday night.
But we won't, we wouldn't be able to add it to that?
I wouldn't add it because the auditors are coming Monday night as well.
So we would have to be, what if we put it another, another week after that?
I don't know what his availability is that far out. He gave me next week, so I can ask.
So we either have to have two meetings next week or schedule one the following week?
Correct.
Does anyone on the board have a preference?
Yeah, I would prefer to check his availability, I mean, to see what he's got available.
Okay. Because that's what he gave me, is anytime next week.
Yeah. I would, I would try to shoot for another Monday. I think that's, would be the best instead of trying to get people to book.
Monday the 13th, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah. Is everyone okay with asking if the availability on that?
Thank you. Yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Not seeing anyone calling in.